Okay, let's get to. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the tonight's edition of the Committee of the Whole. We're going to call this meeting to order. It's 5:07. All Alders are present except for Tom Rayom, who's excused. Begin with, we're going to review and discuss the 2023 budget this evening, and we're going to begin with the library. So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine.
Hello, everyone. How are we doing? I'm really excited to be here. It is my first budget meeting, so I have been watching the other ones, but please feel free to interrupt me with any questions. I definitely see this as a learning opportunity, both for the council but also for our public. So moving, just starting on page 57, if that works for council, we are proactively making some cuts to the library's budget just to kind of have a good show of faith that we are recognizing the discussions that happened last year during the budget season. One of those, the main change we are recommending, and it actually isn't showing up here, is the cutting of the administrative services manager position, an FTE position that has been at the library for some time. It is not a public-serving position, and it is unfilled right now. So those are the two reasons why I recommended to the library board to cut that position. And they did approve the budget in front of me. So they're in agreement with that. Obviously, I made this budget kind of three weeks into my time here. So a complicated time to start, but I do just want to say that I'm still very much like evaluating the library's organizational structure. So I'm confident that additional staff changes will occur moving forward. My priority right now is to keep the services we have intact, but also to kind of think about important structural changes that can help us serve our community better in the future. I do not think by removing that one FTE that our public services will be impacted. That position is completely off-desk, does not program, mostly does paperwork, admin stuff. So between kind of tasks that I've, I plan to do myself and work with the city, I think we can really kind of cut that position without a major loss of service for the library. Besides that, the staffing has really stayed the same at the library for the past kind of five-plus years. So we are overdue for an org reorganization. Moving on, we do have kind of, we are coming in $73,000 under last year's total wages and benefits because of that full-time cut. I also, we calculated kind of the benefits for that position as well. So we are coming in under 6% less than last year's. We also, myself, the management team in the library board, did go through the operating expenditures. And again, I don't have the benefit of kind of our history, but looking at our actual costs, I was able to make some significant cuts to operating expenditures, specifically in the building and grounds. Evaluating the contracts, I think there's going to be a certain amount of cost savings there, along with hopefully future partnerships with Parks and Rec and other city departments. So that's saving, I'm potentially budgeting a $50,000 savings from last year's budget. Our materials are really quite broken down here, which you could argue is a little bit more detailed than you need. But we've made kind of some light cuts to the collection side as well. If you notice, the collections expenditures have been very healthy. The library's collection is quite something to be proud of. We're often, every year actually, more items are requested from South Central, from our library, than we request to bring in. So that shows that we are truly a resource for our library system and that our collection is something that our community is interested in. That being said, I think we can kind of make some cuts a little bit. Often you see we're not spending our full budgeted amount. The one budget item that I did increase for materials was large print. Large print is a special format, and particularly with our population, I think that will just continue to grow for a little bit. So I'm investing a little bit more in that. Electric and our water and light costs stay the same. Same with our kind of expenditures for our computer and technology equipment. The final kind of expenditure on the library's side is programming. Programming is actually an incredibly important part of the library's kind of daily operations. The library is here for all community members, but it can often be kind of overwhelming or intimidating to come into the library space. So we have programs to kind of break down those barriers and ensure our community members feel safe and welcome in the library. I will say that our programming budget is quite small and has remained so for some time. Down the line, I would like to increase that. More patrons visiting the library will eventually lead to more circulations and hopefully additional revenue sources from our county reimbursement funding. So all in all, the library cut 150-plus K from our budget through kind of thoughtful cuts that we can absorb fairly easily. I do want to make the point that, looking at our revenue streams, that we are also, there's two major sources of revenue loss moving into 2023. And this is where the library's budget becomes a little bit more confusing, so please let me know if you have any questions. So the fund balance is what remains from the library's budget at the end of the year. Traditionally, the library director has said the fund balance would be around $20,000. I am forecasting that we will have around $100,000 at the end of this year just because we are kind of running, right now we are without a library assistant director and without the business manager position. So there will be a certain amount of cost savings there. And then the other thing that is kind of dramatically impacting our budget is our reimbursement from Wood County. And this is where my handy-dandy spreadsheet comes in. So as you see, the, almost 70% of the library's revenue comes from the city via property taxes. But we are unique as a department because we bring in 30% of our operating budget from outside of the city. This is called county reimbursement funding. It is protected by state statute, and it's really incredible because any human without a library in their community, their county is responsible for ensuring they have access to said library, and we get reimbursed per each physical circulation. The actual formula is on the second page. And this is where kind of two big numbers come in, year after year. Operating expenditures for the library, that does not include capital expenditures divided by physical circulation. That does not include digital circulation or all the help provided by the library, the outreach, the programs. It's just those two data points. So this was developed years ago as kind of an idea to try and quantify library usage, right? Theoretically, an impossible thing to do in one simple formula, but this is the equation they came up with. So you get that unit cost. The idea is cost per circ, but again, more goes into it. And then you multiply the non-resident circulation by that unit cost, and you get the amount that each county needs to reimburse the city of Wisconsin Rapids for the library use. That is where that 30% of funding comes from, and that's what makes us really unique, right? If someone from the township of Grand Rapids comes to the library and checks out a material, the city gets reimbursed for that. If someone from the township of Grand Rapids is, you know, driving on our roads, we do not get reimbursed for that. So this makes us really unique and the library's budget a little bit more complicated because if we see kind of a major shakeup of either the operations expenditures or the total physical circulations, the reimbursement we are receiving specifically from Wood County can dramatically change. So we went from 640K in 2020 to nearly $100,000 less, which is what I'm forecasting for '23. Now, this number is a forecast. Wood County has not approved its budget and will not until November. Wood County, I'm anticipating they are going to reimburse us at a rate of 85%, though by state statute, they only have to reimburse at 70%. Historically, though, they have done 85%. Best-case scenario, obviously, would be 100%. So between 2022 and 2023, we lost almost 180K in our budgets just because of variations between what the fund balance will be and the county reimbursement specifically from Wood County. So that loss of revenue kind of stacks on top of the internal cuts that the library board has already made. So yes, when you look at our bottom line, you see a very, you know, less than $3,000, but in actuality, we're cutting or, cutting but also having the loss of revenue of 350K. So moving forward, the library just needs to be very aware of how that will play out in future years. Yes?
I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's talk solar panels.
Oh, yes. I love, okay, so the solar panel situation is obviously a complicated situation that I have inherited, and it has been kind of a crash course in solar panels. If anybody's ever interested, I'd love to take you all for a tour onto the roof. But the seven-year kind of contract is coming to an end. The library board made a deal with Viking Electric, a company out of Minnesota, for this kind of very elaborate solar panel system. The final balloon payment coming due next year. There is some question about how the library board would like to proceed. We have the opportunity of paying this last balloon payment and then potentially owning the panels outright. Or there's a possibility that the library board would say, no, thank you, we do not want this structure, and Viking Electric would be theoretically responsible for removing the panels from the roof. I do have that amount budgeted in kind of my document here. So the, we're estimating around 150 would be budgeted in the budget as it is presented. Obviously, spending that much on infrastructure that is potentially not the best fit for the library and the library's space isn't ideal. Ultimately, the, ultimately, that decision will fall to the library board. But I've been working with water and light, kind of navigating this situation. So it is definitely a work in progress, but we've made some movements.
So just so I'm clear, it's $150,000 estimated to buy out, for that buyout of that contract?
Yes.
Thank you. And for the last six years, making that monthly payment for that system, we are losing about 13, we're in a negative $13,000 a year having the solar panels on that roof currently, correct?
Yes.
For the last six or so?
Yes. Every month, we pay a couple thousand dollars as rent or lease for the panels. And that has been going on since the panels were installed.
13 grand a year.
Yes, you see, we, it's $28,800 every year spent on the panels.
And what's the life expectancy?
There is some kind of question about that. Jem kind of mentioned that there's a range. I mean, between 10 and 15 years is what he kind of quoted me. That being said, there's a lot of question marks still in the air. I have not seen kind of a tech come out to maintain or clean the panels. And again, this is very much a learning and progress for me. But I know the library board is aware of this issue and very interested in kind of getting it sorted.
Yeah, and I agree. I, this is new to you, it's new to the board, and it's new pretty much to the council here, and we inherited this. And my understanding, we inherited a system that was grossly oversized, that wasn't to our benefit, on the power purchasing back to the grid. But I do have a concern, you know, the taxpayers paying that balloon payment.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, because I think unbeknownst to all of us, you know, the original plan was that it would be fundraised, and it would be, it would be done that way, that payment would be taken care of. And unfortunately, we inherited no fundraising.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah.
Has any communication been brought up with Viking? Like, if they choose not to have them any longer, I mean, is there any buyback amount for the panels or any money we get back or anything like that?
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that quite yet. The situation has been very complicated and very messy. So the, it's been difficult to get information from our side. So we are going to be kind of reaching out to Viking and seeing what the situation could be.
And the contracts for this are being reviewed?
Yes.
With this information?
The contract is not necessarily written with the library in mind. It's potentially not the best contract for the library.
I know we talked about this before. Tim, do you know, was this, were the solar panels put in the budget that the city council approved? Or was it something that was kind of done to the side? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like terminology-wise, was it ever put into a budget that was approved by city council?
This was brought before the council, I do believe. You know, they approved the actual installation. I forget what year that is, 2018, 18?
I think 17 or 18.
17, and things like that. And as far as, you know, at that time, it was is that, you know, obviously, they'd make this payment to Viking Electric, approximately $2,400 a month. And obviously, the electric costs would be decreased. And when you kind of look back at, you know, what we were paying for electric before the contract, and now, it's comparable. But the balloon payment, which, you know, was disclosed when the council approved it, but at that time, it was saying that the balloon payment would be fundraised for, and that would not be a taxpayer responsibility. But obviously, you know, you know, things change, but that's kind of how it was approved at the council level back then.
So I know Sue's not here right now, but in your mind, dealing with a lot of numbers, is it set up in place that if we were to reneg on the $150,000 balloon payment as the city council, they can still probably come back on the city because?
That's a contractual thing, it's beyond my expertise. It's like, you know, all depends on what the terminology in the contract is, and I think that's kind of where, you know, the next step's going to be. Is that, you know, we have this balloon payment, they're investigating the contract, and obviously, the options will be brought forth.
Who's all looking into the contract right now?
Yes, we are going to have, the library board has been perusing the contract and unfortunately, kind of discovering the layers of complications that kind of work against the library. The former director did sign the contract. So it's pretty clear that we will eventually have to pay or have them removed.
Okay. So is Sue involved in the legal minds also? I know contracts are?
Oh, yes. I mean, we're definitely going to have Sue involved in these conversations, yeah. We're hopeful that, you know, new director, new conversations with Viking before we kind of escalate it, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, the concern is the life of that roof.
Yes.
And how do we replace that roof with all that on the roof?
Yeah.
So the roof's going to probably come due before the life of the solar panels, potentially.
I'll just say, I'll assure you, this spirited conversation about the solar panels, and the 150, I think, is the board's number of worst-case scenario. So it's not necessarily that's what the number is. There is no number yet from Viking. So it's going to be fair-assessed market value, and we're hoping maybe there'll be a little grace. Well, I mean, it's hard to say. So right now, it's up in the air, but yes, it's a potential issue we'll have to deal with when this contract comes to fruition.
Can we, do we need to have that line item in right now, then? Is it something that can be talked about when we cross this bridge?
Well, that's up to the library board because we only set the apportionment, so they get to decide where that portion's spent.
Right, so I'm saying, should we decrease the apportionment? Like, we can, I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying we don't necessarily have to put it in the budget right now.
Right now, it's under miscellaneous.
And then, just to add to that, you know, really, when you look at the structure of the budget request for 2023, the majority of that $150,000 is being funded out of their carryforward, which is already appropriated in the library budget. So they're carrying forward, estimating $174,000, carrying forward $100,000, depending on how that all flushes out. Majority of that is being funded through their already appropriated funds. Correct.
From, and from this year.
Yep.
What, whatever we don't spend by the end of this year goes back into our budget for 2023.
So you're talking about a projected, you're projecting you're going to have a budget surplus?
Yeah, because we are, you know, six months down two positions, so it's.
Right. So what does that have to do, the 175 or four or whatever? That's a carryover from last year. And what's the carryover from 2022 to, wait? Yeah, this year?
175 is the 2021 carryover.
To 22. So 22 to 23, is that in this?
And a lot of that was because of the COVID and unspent funds.
Okay.
So that's being carried forward, plus whatever, you know, with the projected vacancies that we have from this year. Projecting that.
Okay.
There'll be carryover funds to fund that $150,000 payment, or $100,000 of it.
A hundred, yeah. I do like to budget fairly conservatively when it comes to forecasting revenues because it's, you know, kind of difficult to anticipate. But the library has been kind of running short-staffed, and moving forward without that position will contain, you know, continue to have the, you know, systematic cutting of the budget through the loss of the position. But hopefully, our fund balance would be 150, so we could cover that without burdening the taxpayers for an additional fund. But by cutting us 150, moving forward, as Tim indicated, that would just be a budget cut for the library.
So if you have 150, 100 left, you'd think, okay, we're putting 150 into the budget for the possible panels, balloon payment. And then we don't spend 150, then isn't that, that's 300,000 extra then? Because you would have the extra 150, plus the 150 that was already in there. Am I confused? Am I making too much out of this?
As of right now, I would, the library board's direction was we should be planning to fulfill our contract. And until I get further direction from the library board, I have to kind of follow that plan.
Put that in there.
So I think, you know, 150 is kind of the ballpark figure that we've decided to move forward with for the panels.
The hope, then, is you have 150 in surplus and that pays for the panels?
Yes.
Leftover that goes into next year, okay. So you said the library is short-staffed?
Yes.
Is that according to the projections of what you think, how many you think you need in order to run it? Or by the amount of money that's been paid for staff for the last umpteen years?
So right now, there are two full-time positions that are unfilled, an assistant director and the business manager. For 2023, I recommended to the library board that the business manager position was cut, which is what you see reflected in front of you. Though, the assistant director is a public-facing position, and that position is unfilled right now. Hopefully, we will fill it in '23 for a lot of reasons, but most importantly, currently, the library has three service points. But in 2023, we're hoping to expand that to have the maker space also staffed. That's another, you know, we're open six days a week. Another body that can work, that's very specialized space is going to be really key to making that successful. So that's why that position is still in the budget for '23.
So you had mentioned when we met earlier about, and I know it's not apples to apples, but your old library was comparable in size?
No, half the size.
Half the physical space?
Half the physical space. Well, no, the physical space was 20,000 square feet, so about half. But the population was also about half.
Of the city?
Yeah.
And you worked it with how many employees?
10.45 FTE.
And your budget was?
850.
Okay, thank you.
But, I mean, give me some time.
I was just curious.
I just got here. I mean, come on. I was at Rice Lake for 10 years.
Thank you for all your time, and thank you for taking over the library.
Oh, I'm delighted to be here. Yes.
Thank you. I know, just in general conversations in the last couple of years, looking at the wages according to the positions that are there was very enlightening. And I think that's what some people were, myself included, were very concerned with. I mean, I know in your profession, they need to know library skills, obviously. But what some people were questioning is, you know, do we need someone that's paid 70, 80,000, which was about, I believe, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it in front of me, where the wages, what I had the wages for each position? Do we need a $70,000 position for? Do we need a $70,000 position for y, somebody?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, besides a director, obviously. So I think that was a big concern, not saying, you know, let's fire them and, and bring in someone with no experience, I'm not saying that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you know, with, with people when they retire, do we need to replace them with someone with a, a master's degree or a doctorate degree paying 70, 80,000 dollars? So I think that was just a concern as well, if you wanted to elaborate on that, thank you.
Yeah, I would love to. So you're right, we do have a highly educated and trained staff, so we're incredibly fortunate to have that. Many of our part-time staff also have master's degrees, though they aren't being paid at, at the librarian level, so, one, two, three, four, yep, there's, there would be six master-degreed librarians at Rapids, once we fill, uh, once, if we fill the assistant director, and I would argue that those positions are essential. Librarianship is so complicated, right? The days of, you know, you walk in, it's quiet, you're shushed, a librarian brings you a book, you know, it's practically a mausoleum, uh, have really faded away, and what's so complicated today about librarianship is every single individual in a building in the library is, is coming for something different, right? Uh, and much of that is complicated, confidential, you know, really essential life learning, that the librarian kind of has no ability to kind of plan or research, right? Everybody's just coming in hot, right off the street. So the ability to kind of handle so many different situations, and also kind of navigate teaching someone a skill while learning it yourself is really complicated. And the master's degree really gives you kind of that broader understanding, those really, um, important overarching ideals that are essential for librarianship. That being said, I, so I, I would defend those positions as master-degreed librarians. Obviously, while maybe you guys don't know, I started as a children's librarian. So for me, having a skilled, specialized librarian that focuses on early development is essential, right? Obviously, everybody's expecting me to talk about how important early literacy is, but when you look at the statistics, um, about early literacy, they're, they're fairly devastating. Uh, the US government uses third and fourth grade reading statistics to forecast how many prison and jail cells will need to build. So those early literacy skills are essential, and while a lot of the things we're doing at the library, um, to a patron can look very simple, it's because years of study and practice has gone into that. That being said, I do think the library's organizational structure can be improved, and that's one of the things that I do need a little bit of extra time to kind of navigate, because I am, I am inheriting kind of a sprawling organization, um, that could use some fine-tuning, and I think moving forward, you would see positions changing. Um, but again, it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis and what's best for the community. Um, most libraries of our size do have master-degreed librarians in the adult, teen, and children's role, so that's not unique. My small library in Rice Lake had an assistant director, a master-degreed librarian, and there are just certain things that, as we've kind of experienced, right? You need to have some sort of organizational structure to ensure kind of the passing of the baton, and right now, we don't have that, even with all the staff. So there's a lot of things for me to work on with this, um, and please, I've taken the conversations here at council very seriously, and I know the library board has as well, and moving forward, we will continue to make really these difficult decisions, right? The library board chose to cut a position, that wasn't done lightly. Um, I took on that work, you know, I, we, we know what, what's going to happen moving forward, and I think, again, that's not something that I want to do in three weeks, so I do need a little bit more time to kind of navigate a very thorny, complicated issue at the library. But yeah, a very long answer, because I love talking about library, Sheri.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did, I just did wanna say that, um, I know the library board, um, watching the meetings, I know Mr. Austin has, um, informed us as well, um, I know they are looking, you know, to, to revamp and, you know, how it can run a little bit more efficiency, or efficient, um, with less.
Yeah.
Um, I also wanna say that, tip-topping on what you said, that it is very important for staff, because the public library is the go-to place. Um, after school, kids that don't have computers, don't have parents at home to teach them, the librarians at the li, or people at the library, they are being the teachers, and so, um, I commend them, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
So I will never talk about staff, because I do not know your operations, nor do I regong making any recommendations or thoughts, but, you know, and probably the council doesn't under, no, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're strengthening our, providing IT services there, we are, our, our, our maintenance people are gonna be more involved there, uh, we plan on, our parking rack's gonna be hopefully doing the mowing, um, some of the, the care of the grounds, uh, our street department will take over hopefully with our sidewalk machine and be able to do snow removal, and I guess my concern is, you know, with a $3,000 difference in budget from this year to last year, it doesn't recognize the considerable savings that the library no, no longer have to come for in the contracts. And I'm just kind of wondering where that is, because that is, with us taking that up, that's kind of unrealized money that's still being provided to the library that's not being cap, captured in this budget as a reduction of costs.
Yeah, um, at the time of making this budget, I wasn't sure about contracts with like EMR or things of that nature, and I did kind of have to just ballpark, um, the increase for, um, the money that we definitely will need to contribute back to the city of Rapids to kind of ensure that we're paying our, our dues. I do think, um, some of this does come down to, you know, being a new library director, like, do we need, I mean, from 2020 to 140 for buildings and grounds? Um, to a certain extent, I don't know. In 2021, we spent more than that. The previous two years, we spent considerably less, but I agree, by making those kind of really thoughtful decisions, we could save thousands of dollars.
So I just noticed a $45,000 reduction, and I made the assumption that.
Yep.
That might be buildings and ground type thing, but it doesn't really show on the bottom line.
It doesn't show on the bottom line because of the loss of revenue from, because, because we're kind of absorbing that nearly $200,000 loss of revenue.
But that means the taxpayers are gonna be, you know, whether it be us hiring additional summer help to take on some of this extra work, is it, is a, an additional expense that's not being captured on the bottom line.
Yeah.
For the library.
Um, most of my conversations with department heads, it, it doesn't seem like it would impact, but obviously, if we do cause that amount of work, we would be responsible for paying for it.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, all departments are, but, yeah, it comes down to time, time spending there and staff time.
Yeah.
But there is a cost, because that was a cost that the library was contractually paying vendors to do that work.
Mm-hmm.
Probably considerably higher than, you know, us maintaining our own buildings, but I just wanted to point out that I, I don't think it's being recognized, you know, our IT staff and streets and parks department, or the additional work they're taking on, it's not being captured in, in the budgetary savings.
Hmm.
That's why I pointed it out, but.
Mayor, may I, so what you're saying is, so like, for the, let's say, building and grounds, so they reduced it by 45,000, and at the time that the budget was, we, we weren't saying that our own parks department was going to do it instead of EMR?
We were, we're, we've been in kind of talks about, but this was all kind of all intertwined as one thing at one time.
But I was just saying, is, so is the 45,000 decrease due to our parks department doing that, or is this a $45,000 decrease in that because we weren't going to do that?
Well, oh, my directive was basically, we need to be responsible, and we need to cut some lines. I will say, EMR is incredibly responsive, the library grounds are impeccable, does that need to happen? No, we don't have to have our lawn mowed every week, there's going to be a cost savings here, um, but also things like supplies, replacements, the library will just potentially go without, to make sure that we do come in under budget.
Thank you.
And I'll say, at this point, I mean, for Catherine to, to really know the bottom line on a lot of these contracts with these subs, it, her job is very tough, she's been left in a very tough position. Um, it's gonna take her some time to figure out what the inner workings were over there at McMillan, so, I mean, I can understand, you know, carrying over a number here or there, because you wanna be sure it's captured, so, um, that's all.
Tim, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Oh, I was just gonna kind of recognize, you know, with the, the talk with the building grounds and, but you also see an increase in, uh, you see on the building and grounds work, C O W R, that's the crews went from 3,000 to 10,000. So as we kind of work through some of these maintenance contracts and things, well, you know, we're anticipating using more of city crews in there, and that reflects in the budget, but till we actually get in and see what those reductions are and those contractual type work, it'll all flush out, and I see next year, we'll have a better, more clarity as to what that exactly is.
Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a few comments and a couple of questions here. Your board certainly made a lot of cuts from last year's budget. Uh, saying that, I just have a couple of questions here. Uh, on your sick leave and personal time, you eliminated all that, does that mean that if somebody gets, you know, has to get hurt, uh, take off?
That you.
That's on their personal time?
Sharp, sharp eyes, this, this would be your new director, um, I was looking at, I'm not used to this very nice document, I'm used to documents like this. So I was looking at actuals for 2022, and we hadn't used any, I'm not sure why, so I just kind of went, I was really looking at the actual numbers to forecast for 23, um, so that was just my error.
Well, when you say that, in other words, if, if somebody in the future, if somebody got sick or whatever, that they would still get paid for?
Yes.
Being off?
Yes.
But is it anywhere in your budget to cover that?
So as of right now, it's not showing up in that line item. I'm assuming that the sick and paid leave are coming out of a different kind of line item, because people have been sick and people have been paid this whole year, but it's not reflected in the actuals from 2022.
At this point, do you know where it would come from, what, what account?
Wages. Is, is, so next year, it will be coming out of sick and leave time, but the actuals weren't reflecting that when I made this budget.
Okay, and any other question I would have, or probably the last one, and put everybody at ease, I guess, on your coffee house, uh, now you've, you've taken it completely out.
Yes.
Uh, you still have 500 in there, but you also have self-serve.
Yes.
Do you have any idea, does your board know how much money you might get, uh, off of coffee sales?
So I have lots.
I don't see it in here at all.
Yes, so I have lots to stay, say about the coffee shop. I know that patrons in the community is having a lot of complicated feelings about this. The position that is cut, the administrative services manager, a significant amount of her job was ordering supplies for the coffee shop. Um, by replacing, having a staffed space, we would be able to kind of roll back the expenditures related to that, and the $5,000 are just kind of one-time costs to purchase machines. Ideally, we'll be able to find some vendors, but that might not happen, and having kind of a gathering space in the library is really important to the community.
Okay, okay, so you answered one question that's not in here, you are going hopefully with machines then?
Yes, hopefully, yeah, definitely with machines. So patrons would be able to get, you know, um, a cup of coffee, a snack from a vending machine, um, potentially, there, there could be a donation kind of setup, um, there are a lot of different ways that that will happen.
And that's fine, there's still a cost with it, but, uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would recognize a member in the audience, forgive me. Come on up and state your name, address.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wayland, um, my address is 211 15th Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. Um, and I'm here kind of partly about the library, I was, um, I'm always interested in what's going on in the city, um, and the budget process and things like that. We actually lived out in Rudolph, um, you know, 25 years ago, and we moved in, into the city, um, in 2022, and so it's been a long time, and one of the things that, um, that drew us into the city was being closer to the library, and, and the other services that the city provides. Um, you know, we were, we were kind of excited that we were close by the pool, but, uh, but still, you know, we're, we feel like we're kind of in the heart of the city over here. Um, the library was just so important to my children growing up, um, I don't know if any of you know, but the limit on children's books to check out is 100. We met that multiple times, um, but I want to, I, I hear you talking about, you know, the expenses to the taxpayers, um, a, as if we're separate from being users of the library and paid, and, and it's not just, if you're, if you're someone that lives in the city and you don't use the library, you still, I think, benefit from it, because the children around you can go there, the teenagers can go there, um, you can have, you know, education even from home. I have a lot of people that, you know, I know that utilize the library's, um, apps, like, um, Libby and things like that, there's just so many different ways, and we're really excited, my older teens, to use the maker space, we've taken part in so many things, but I just feel like the city gets, um, gets so much out of it, and I, I know it's important to, you know, to, to me, I'd be like, oh, just give them tons of money, and stuff, but, and I, I appreciate that the city is wanting to be financially, um, responsible, but I think supporting the library strongly is financially, um, responsible, um, just, that's one of the things about being a community, is that, you know, when we all pitch in together, and that with our taxpayer dollars, and that we can do incredible things, and that, I mean, I can't, I mean, I could have a little library in front of my house and that, but that's not like having this huge library, that through it, I have access to all these other libraries throughout the state, I have access to the, um, to the librarians, and I can pick their minds and be like, hey, I have this question, um, you know, help me out here. Um, I can send new people to the area, over to the library, to say, you know, um, this is a wonderful resource, this is somewhere where you, you know, you just moved here, go get a library card, it's the best thing. Um, and, you know, I've just seen so many different types of people at the, you know, at the library, so many different community members, and, and it's just inspiring, um, and I do have to put a plug in for the, um, for the solar panels, I'm sorry, I, you must have been part of the, um, Mayor Blazer, part of the city council. I'm sorry, I, you must have been part of the, um, Mayor Blazer, part of the city council that approved that um, in two thousand seventeen? Okay, I thought you were on the council then. But I do know we live in a community and, and very close by, we have the Midwest Renewable Energy, um, Resource um, right up in Amherst. And they have so much, um, experience with solar panels. And they would be more than happy, I believe, to, um, to help out and answer questions, especially about that roof. And that I know that there are, um, ways to work around that and, and keep it. I feel like, um, I don't, I'm not sure that, I, I would be a little bit kind of hiding my face if, you know, I saw in the news that we were the, you know, community that actually like took our, our really, um, our solar panels and let them, um, default. I think that would be unpleasant and, um, and not the image that we want to send as a community and as a city, um, at all. So I don't think that was where you were going, ma'am. But, but I don't think that we want to, you know, have people provide services for us and that we have contracts for and then we go, yeah, we're not going to pay that. And I, cause I don't think they're going to want to work with us in the future. So if that makes any sense. So thank you for your time and thank you so much for all of you, for what you do and serving. I know that it's really complicated and you put in so much time as, you know, aldermen and, um, what you do here. So thank you.
Patrick?
Okay, so I passed out a, uh, handout called, uh, Library Comparisons. According to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website, out of three hundred and eighty libraries in the state of Wisconsin, McMillan Library ranks seventieth in per capita funding at sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Of the top seventy in per co- capita revenue, only four libraries get more than McMillan. That'd be Brookfield, Madison, Verona, and La Crosse. So on the next page, you can see McMillan is down at the bottom there. And then if you just go up, you can see the, uh, and on page eight, I compared the libraries, uh, by municipality population. What I did was I took the, uh, ten above and ten below. Average total operating expenses for the ten larger municipalities is one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety cents. And that is total operating. That's, um, all the funds that they get in from county and elsewhere. Average total operating expenses for the ten smaller municipalities is one million, five thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents. So the average of those two is one million, ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Last year, McMillan was allocated seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents more than the average of the twenty municipalities closest to size of Wisconsin Rapids. Average per capita resident support is forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. A difference of twenty-four dollars when compared to McMillan at sixty-eight, thirty-nine. And then lastly, I had, uh, sorted the libraries by square footage. Cause I've heard that it's impossible to run it without having, uh, that many staff and that much money to support them. So I, I'd just like to point out, um, just below McMillan at forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven square feet is Oak Creek. They run theirs for one million, five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Under that is Watertown, also one million, or I'm sorry, nine hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. So it definitely is possible to run a large library on a smaller budget.
Patrick, may I ask a question? When you fir- you first were saying for the comparison, starting on page two, you said there was how many municipalities that were above Wood County or McMillan?
There's seventy above, but some are smaller, so they don't get the, so the per capita obviously is higher to support their library.
Okay, I thought you said there was only ten in here that were above our operating budget.
There are only four that are bigger than ours. That would be Brookfield, Madison, Verona, and La Crosse.
When you say bigger, you mean budget-wise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Total operating expenses.
Okay, cause there's Middleton, there's Pittsburgh, there's Bawatosa.
Okay, but their per capita is less. This is sorted per capita.
So you're just saying, okay, above our per capita, okay, that's why I was just trying-
Of the top seventy, there's only four.
Okay.
And I also had, uh, done some research on, uh, median income. And I came across a variety of different, a variety of different websites. And then I, and one of them had, had put Wisconsin Rapids in the lower ten percent of the state. So if you would compare like us to Brookfield, obviously our money here is not the same as it is in Brookfield.
Patrick Claus, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just wondering, cause just like I was saying for, to compare apples to apples, I know it's difficult because, you know, some are county libraries, so their funding's going to be probably a lot different. And I see, you know, like the community library, um, I just was curious of how the funding sources were different compared to ours, that's all.
So, yeah, all this can be found on the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website. And it comes up with a spreadsheet that is three hundred and eighty lines by, goes all the way to IC. So as far as the spreadsheet goes, you know, A A B B, all the way to IC.
Maybe this question's for Catherine. So I guess all these libraries stacked against each other are, a- and you're new to this, so I'm not, this isn't direct yet. Are they better at maybe fundraising for a lot of their programming? Or do libraries kind of? I'm just trying to wa- wonder why there's such a disparity in cost and sizes. Is it, I'm just wondering if some libraries are better at fundraising their programs versus allocations?
Yeah, some libraries have friends groups where they fundraise thirty thousand dollars for programming and that can be used in your operations. Um, but Councilman Delaney and I did have a very interesting discussion last week. And there are, there's a lot of different ways to manipulate the data. Our library is really well-funded. I can't speak to the past few years. Again, like we've, I talked to Sherry about, there's a lot of room for improvement. But I'm, I guess I'm curious about, uh, per capita is a pretty good comparison, right? Because it's per person. So pulling out specific libraries further than that kind of bends the truth of that a little bit, right? And yes, smaller communities pay more for their library, which kind of shows the importance of libraries to even the smallest communities. We kind of got into a, a conversation about the importance of libraries, particularly when there is such a wealth disparity in our community. The library's usage shot up when the mills closed because people were using those resources more than ever before. I would argue that a community that is complicated like Wisconsin Rapids needs a stronger library more than anybody. But moving forward, do I hope to kind of revamp the library's budget? Yes. Like I kind of was talking about earlier with the rev- um, revenue side, if we do have a substantial operations cut, that's just not a one-time thing. That will continue to impact the library for years to come. Because of this data, um, this data that we're seeing right now comes from the annual report. It's something that all public libraries do every year. And this data is how we get all of that, the calculations for the reimbursement costs, right? So that's where we get this data. So the data we're looking at right now, uh, Councilman Delaney, I'm assuming it's twenty-one? Okay, so this data will be, was used to calculate the twenty-three reimbursement. But say we cut the library's budget by half a million dollars. The operations are pretty decimated. Theoretically, the library would have to cut services fairly extensively. Loss of staff and probably service hours, which in turn would what? Impact our physical circulation. So in two years, when you have the data from the twenty-twenty-three annual report, you would see kind of a dramatic response to this, which would be less county reimbursement funding from Wood County. So instead of maybe, you know, five fifty, we would get four fifty. And so the circle continues and it kind of becomes a downward spiral. Which is kind of the one ki- complicated thing about library finances is one cut leads to another cut and down the road.
If I may, thank you. Um, you hit, I think, the nail on the head, um, with the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And I, it'd be interesting here, um, you know, like Appleton and all that. I mean, they're growing communities. I mean, they're just building, building, growing, growing, more people, more people. Not so here. And availability of, availability of resources is, is very low for the, I think, the people that live here. And I know, um, the library is a great resource for that. So I just wanted to comment, thank you.
So sure, per capita is, uh, is fine and, uh, I do think it is important to look at the others when you're comparing. Okay. One thing that I found interesting is that the, um, I'd asked Tim what is needed to fund for the, uh, residents of Wisconsin Rapids. What, what is the base number that they need to fund? That is, uh, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. They're asking for one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. A difference of seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. And, uh, I think that's pretty interesting because if you look at the, on, uh, page eight where we sorted it by population, McMillan was at, allocated seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents more than the average of the twenty municipalities closest to us. So those numbers are only a couple hundred dollars off. So I'm gonna make a motion to decrease the budget by seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Just for clarification, the, the five hundred thousand is just the amount that's needed to be exempted from the county library tax. Just so it's not what's the minimum needed to fund the library. So just want, okay, just wanted to make that clear. I'll second the motion. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. So, so what I'm understanding is there's, libraries are different now. You kind of started your conversation out that way. And but then when we talked, uh, upstairs in the room, we talked about not wanting to make waves with any kind of state government or anything in terms of not wanting them to take away the funding that already exists and how it exists. So w- like, wh- what do we do? I, I totally understand what everybody, you know, like, we, we want our community to be great and we love our library. We, again, I can only reiterate that many, so many times. We've, you know, done as much as we can with our kids as they've come up through the, through the years and it's great and we love it. I guess my question is if, you know, if, if, if we did cut it and got it in line with what the city could actually afford, and again, it is, it, it kind of seems like right now it's, 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 you know, we're, 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 we're set up to go in debt another two, two million dollars. So really, we're going in debt to pay the, you know, the extra one point three million dollars for the library. Again, we're gonna twist it and we're gonna turn it a different way so we say it's for the roads and all that. But, you know, we, my take on you is that if you run this for, you know, two point three million dollars or one point four million dollars, you're gonna find a way to do an excellent job doing it. And you're gonna run the services that need to be there and you're gonna take care of the people in the community like you're saying. Don't get me wrong, if I was handed a two point three million dollar budget, that's what I would want to keep or something close to that. And I realize it's not that right now, so that's just what was in my head, but you're, you're right. I know it's there, uh, you know, and I know that, that we can make that happen. And it would be nice to be able to get the city to a point where it's living within its means so that we're not constantly going in debt to, to run the city. And that's, that's all our goal is. We're not looking to hurt the city or, you know, it, it gets, it gets a little tough. And by, by, you know, the, the stances that I've taken and the things that I've said in order to try to help, I understand people don't like it. I understand that I'm, that, you know, we have to say things that people don't like. So not easy from our side either, but, uh, again, I appreciate all the work you're doing coming to our city. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but seven hundred thousand dollar decrease in the library budget, what kind of impacts are we looking at?
Well, if you're looking at this very handy dandy spreadsheet that I printed out earlier, let's take a look at library revenues. So, um, that's a significant amount of, uh, the property taxes that the library would receive. Off the bat, when you look at the breakdown of library expenditures, you know, there's, it's, there's only traditionally a few places that you can cut in a library's budget, right? There's, um, staff, supplies, or materials. Uh, with, uh, three quarters of a million dollars being cut from the library's budget, many things would have to go. Again, the library board would actually be the deciding body to figure out, you know, would we cut staff? Would we cut hours? With a cut like that though, it's not a matter of if, it'd be yes. Yes to all of the above. Staff would be cut, services would be rolled. Staff would be cut, services would be rolled back. Library hours would be cut. It would be fairly devastating.
Tim, can we go over again? The difference on the grounds that the city would be taking over? Did you give that number, how that has, the mayor pointed out is not showing up in the budget?
Sure, if you look under buildings and grounds, the library buildings and grounds in 2022 was budget $140,000. This year it's proposed at $95,000 for reduction of $45,000. And that's kind of that anticipation that with some of the contract work for buildings and grounds, you know, mechanical systems, obviously landscaping, snow removal and things like that, that would be done with our city crews. And they increased the work, you see, work COWR, that's our in-house labor increased from 3,000 to 10,000 now. Obviously, until we actually get into, you know, the amount of hours spent doing this, you know, whether, you know, landscaping, maybe we hire a seasonal help, that that's what they do. But, you know, obviously a seasonal employee dedicated to that, that's, you know, that's fairly, it's a good deal for the city. We have a lot of seasonal employees that, you know, obviously, and so that's an increase of 7,000. But until we actually get in there and see exactly what our crews can do compared to, you know, the landscaping, I'm fairly confident that, and the snow removal, it's more the mechanical stuff is, you know, but one thing we want to do is like, let's, we have some talented people that have good experience with mechanicals. Get them in there, look at it first before maybe we turn to a contractor to look at it. At least they'll give us some, you know, good guidance on whether it can be done internally or, you know, this is a situation where we have to hire a contractor.
Go ahead, Jane.
And also, I guess, and I didn't bring it up, but, you know, that, the bookkeeper position, that cost savings there is, you know, our HR department stepping up and doing more HR services and our finance department. So, so, you know, that position is helping offset time that these other departments are, are being utilized to help the library because of their expertise, that's what they do, you know, which I think will be a, a huge benefit to the library.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, any further discussion on the motion? Patrick, you want to give the number again or read back the motion, please? I'm not taking the notes, actually.
So, you got it?
Correct.
Could you do a roll call vote?
We'll do a roll call vote on that. Mr. Austin?
No.
No?
No.
Aye.
No.
Another motion fails.
Yep.
What was the number? Four to three? Anything further? So I'm still confused on the savings of the, of the grounds. So how does that affect their budget? I'm still lost on that.
We won't be paying, they won't be paying contract services. So they won't be hiring a third party to do it. It would be part of our operation is we go by there, you know, our sidewalk machines during the winter, they drive right by there. So we'll be able to pick up those things and help save on those costs. But like Tim said, I think they're, they're hard to realize until we get through a year to kind of see what that is and what those costs will end up being.
So then we have a historical number of what the contract services were. We move that, remove that.
The library board already made the recommendation to remove $45,000 from the building and grounds budget. So 2022, it was 140, and 23, the proposed budget is 95.
And so that 140 is the con, 45 is the contractor part of the 140?
That's what we're estimating, yes, along with other cost savings that the library staff will put in place.
Dean?
Yep.
Yeah, and I, you know, meeting Catherine, she's wonderful. She's a brush of breath, brush of fresh, breath of fresh air. Thank you. Compared, you know, I, I getting to know her, I know she, there's, there's changes coming and I know she needs an opportunity to kind of, and it is a lot of money, Patrick, I will not argue that. There's a lot of money that is put into that, you know, and I look at it, you have to look at, libraries are very valuable to the community. So are police, so are fire, so are all the other operations. And one doesn't have a more of a priority, priority over another one. But, you know, she's new to this, you know, she's, she's something different. And, you know, am I gonna tell you that next year's budget's gonna be different? I don't know. I, I'm gonna make the assumption that it's gonna be different, it's gonna look different. But it, she was, she inherited no budget, no pre-planning. And literally she got in and a couple of weeks later, she'd meet with Tim and I, trying to put a budget together, working with the library board. And, you know, I'm hoping next year will be different. I, I support her, what she's doing and I have to, you know, because it's something new and something different. And unfortunately, it was right at the final hour and she didn't have months beforehand to kind of get her feet extra wet. And so hopefully, I'm optimistic. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate what Mayor said and, and I bet this next budget, I mean, the next present, budget that you present, I'm sure will be, will be a lot better as well. So good, good luck and thank you for all you do.
Along those same lines, that's the reason, I gotta, that's the reason I voted the way I voted. Basically, the short amount of time that she's had to to work on this budget. Do I think this budget is high for a library of this size? Absolutely. Do I think we've had ample opportunity for her to dig in deep and find those kind of cuts that we're looking for? Certainly, I don't think we gave her anywhere near enough time to find $755,000 worth of cuts, to say the least, let alone half that even. But the point being, I'm looking at this budget as a probationary period, if you will. And I agree that it's like you were completely, a breath of fresh air is perfect, especially in comparison to what we're used to. So we appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing. And again, I'm looking for a year from now to be going with a completely different discussion on this. So let's see what we can do from there, so. Anything else? Matt?
I make a motion to cut $350,000 out of the library's budget.
I'll second.
At the, as, as Mr. Benteke put it, Catherine, he mentioned what would the cut of $755,000 do? It'd be devastating. So I guess we'll go with the same question. Is it, it's obviously not as devastating, but want to discuss what the cut of $350,000 would be.
Well, again, similar answer to last time. I'm gonna have you look at my expenditures. Staff would probably have to be cut. Services would definitely be cut. Obviously, collections would be gutted. We would theoretically see some closures in terms of hours or potentially days. And then, yeah, I'm, what's one word up from devastating? Does anybody have a thesaurus? Pretty grim, how about? Again, I do want to remind everybody that, how about this? I have been through major budget cuts as a library director at my former library. To kind of show you the cyclical cycle, in 2013, citywide, the library, the city of Rice Lake was in significant debt and each department received major cuts. I believe ours was around $80,000. So we lost staff, we lost hours. But just like other departments, that was kind of the deal. We took the cut and we, we moved forward. But obviously, the loss of operational funding and the following decrease of circulation impacted us in additional ways. Because two years later, in 202015, other city departments were, maybe not recovered, but operating. We had an additional, I think it was $75,000 cut. So instead of, you know, a one-time cut, what you would be doing is cutting me, cutting the library in 2023, 25, 27, and so on and so on. And if that is in your, if that's the intention of the council, then of course, that's the direction you need to go. But cutting the library over a quarter of a million dollars would be continualistically grim for the library. So each two-year cycle, you would see library operations that 30% that we bring in from outside the library decrease. Whereas if you give the library the time to kind of re-establish itself, you know, bring in people, more programming, bring in more of those non-resident patrons of Wood County, increase the circulation, then in two years, we could have an additional 150, $200,000. It's really, the decision lies here. The library staff will continue our good work no matter what. But you're right. Either way, the library will continue to serve our community. The funding depends, the services depend on the funding. So any cut will be a cut to service. Any cut that size will, again, at the will of the library board, potentially lead to staff layoffs.
Can you, uh, can you explain the every-two-year cycle? I wasn't following that.
Yeah, that's, so that's what we talked about a little bit. But yeah, it is really complicated. So when we're looking back at this first page, library revenues, 70% on average of municipal libraries are, is paid by property taxes. Though I would argue Councilman Zachary that because the library gets the property taxes first. Those 1.2, that's def, it's definitely not us that is causing the budget. We get the money first, so we're fine. So the Wood County reimbursement is really what we're talking about. Wisconsin Rapids, we're smack dab in the center of the county. That's really great because when you look at the circulation numbers for Wood County, we get most of those kind of up-for-grab circulations. The people that live in a township or a city without a library. So anybody outside of a city limit with a library, those people are up for grabs, circulation-wise, right? So that person that lives in the township of Grand Rapids, right? Every time they come to the library and check out five books, the city gets reimbursed by the county for those five circulations. Right? So we're using the data that Patrick showed us, but it's two years behind, right? Because he's, we have to have the data for the year complete before we use it to calculate the reimbursement rates. Does that make sense? Yeah. So when we're looking at, you know, this wonderful spreadsheet that we got here, this is data from 2021. So the data used in 2021 is calculated by the library directors, sent off to the individual counties. And then the counties send us back that money. But you know how this works, it takes a little bit of time, right? So in, like, January, February, I write letters using the previous year's data. So next year, I'll be using 2022 data. I'll send it to the counties by the spring. And then the counties have until the next March to send us a check. So that's why the delay of two years. So it's, you know, it makes sense, it's just the leg of data. So we're using the most accurate data. But that's why it's really this cyclical circle, potentially a downward spiral, right? Because 2023, we're cut 350. Two years later, the loss of revenue, but also the kind of loss of physical circulations because we had to maybe close Tuesdays and Thursdays, for example. So we wouldn't get the amount of physical circulations we would have, right? So both numbers are going to be dramatically decreased, creating less money from Wood County specifically.
Just going off what you said, side question, I guess. So you're saying if the, if you have to close, you'd have less circulations for sure?
For sure.
It's proven data? I mean, normally people still find a way to get there if they have to get there.
No, 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 no. So you think, like Cherry indicated, like a lot of our patrons have complicated lives. And if the library isn't accessible to them on a day that works, then of course.
So we see the library more as a, almost like a boys' and girls' club in some ways with books, with a lot more books.
I think of it as a boys' and girls' club, but for literally everyone, right? We're the one organization that serves every single human, no matter whatever. It's pretty unique.
It's beautiful.
It is, it's, it is beautiful. It's the bedrock of democracy.
Right.
I can't talk about libraries enough.
But part of it is that because they're changing face, I guess, they're changing what libraries do, as we talked about. That's part of, that's, that's part of the responsibility, is what I'm hearing. Cause, cause most people can come in and, and do their own thing. And, you know, and we come in, we don't really see anybody or talk to anybody. We come in, we do our thing and then we leave, you know, so.
Well, I would say you're doing your thing because a lot of work went into that thing, potentially. That's invisible to you, right?
Well, the computer, like we get on the computer and then we get our stuff and then we go back to the computer. Yeah, so the tech side is great.
But like, you know, the books don't just magically appear. You know, the programs don't run themselves. Like I was speaking about, like a lot of this seems relatively easy. But like most really essential things, there's a lot of work that goes involved.
So I guess it comes back to what Patrick was showing us is, it seems like for the size of us, the community, the library and everything else, you'd still be able to run it pretty well with, with what we're offering.
Again, I would return to the, uh, the first actual, just the first amount, per capita, right? 70? It's compared to the, we're, we're not quite in the middle. We're a little above the middle, but that seems like a really great place to be. We're definitely nowhere near the cost of the top of the per capita cost per resident. Nor are we towards the bottom. We're, we're a little above average.
Yeah. Well, last thing, outside of the, you know, the, the big words of devastation and catastrophe, I still think you're gonna do a great job, either way.
Thank you, but it, again, I, I, it, it would be devastating.
Yeah, we're in the top 19.
Yeah, we're in the top nineteen percent per capita. So. I don't think that's a little bit above fifty percent. That's in the eighties. So. A cut of three hundred and fifty thousand would bring our per capita down about eighteen dollars. Which would be pretty close to average for the state of Wisconsin.
I'm back, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the moral of that story before though is, we want all non-residents to come in weekly and check out five books a week. Now dramatically help revenues. A hundred book limit, yes.
Also, that, that limit's gone, that limit's gone. There's no limits at the library, bring a semi-truck.
You know, I go back and. Talk about service cuts, the three fifty is much closer to the number I was thinking when I got here this evening. The, um. We talk about. Potential devastation, service cuts, closures. I kind of go back to, I gotta admit, I kind of go back to what Sherry started with. Master's degrees people in the library, I, I get where you're coming from, I understand we need educated people in the library. But the num. Working with. A. Less. I don't, when they said changing employees, but I'm saying, could you work leaner? Without closing? Is a question that comes to my head and, and if we're absorbing that kind of thing in wages. Again, we're borrowing, as Mr. Zachary said, we're borrowing a lot of money and quite frankly, a lot of it's going straight to the, to the taxpayers, they're paying the debt of the library. So I. Wonder if we could continue with less funding. To keep the same hours. And with a little less staff in terms of maybe. Part times instead of FTEs and things of that nature, I just. I agree that, um, with Mr. Zachary, that you could, we definitely think, no matter how you're funded, we think you're gonna do a great job. I agree with that a hundred percent. And, um. I'm inclined to vote in favor of this motion at this point. I don't see any other way to. To, uh. Bring this budget down. Any other further discussion on this?
I would like just to make a reminder that the council would not be able to dictate how the budget is cut.
I understand that.
Okay, uh, so the li, the library board would decide. And. That means however they would feel would, you know, serve the library the best.
Hopefully they're sensible. Any other further discussion? Well, we have a motion on the table. To cut the 2023 library budget by three hundred and fifty thousand, five thousand dollars, um, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Austin?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Well, the motion passed, um, four. Four ayes, three, three nays, and. Any other further discussion before we move on to ARPA then? That concludes the library session, do we want to take a quick break? Tim said, yeah, okay, take a quick break.
Well, I emailed and I put in your mailboxes, I met with some staff today, we kind of went through some of the, the original spreadsheet that was passed out to you a while ago. And so the first page, the second page, the third page are kind of what we pared it down to. And the rest of it, we left on here, so you still had it for, to look at. And kind of what our thought process was, you know, we were kind of looking at things that potentially might need to be borrowed for now or in the future. That, that, there will be that need in the future. One item that didn't make the ARPA list, but we've been talking about since then, is Centralia Center. And so to write, if you want to write this down, um, so the rooftop units we did in, on, uh, on Tuesday at finance, we did receive four bids. So it's not official, whatever you approve, but the lowest one was about three hundred and eight thousand, that's for six units. So if you multiply that times two, that's for the twelve units. And then the cost of the roof, that estimate we got, the lowest one last year, so it's gonna be up this year, was three hundred and fifty-four thousand. So that, obviously you look at that, that's almost a million dollars. So that will be something we will be seeing in, in a handful of years. And so it, it needs to be, we need to start planning for it or, um, talk about it through ARPA here. Um, there is about, what, a hundred and eighty thousand in the Centralia fund, roughly? Oh, I'm, well, two hundred and fifty thousand in the Centralia fund. So there is part of a million dollars there to help fund, um, you know, some of this.
So you said three fifty-four for the roof, and could you say again, how much?
About three hundred and eight thousand for rooftop units, for six of them.
Three?
Three hundred and eight thousand.
And we're gonna need twelve eventually.
Correct. So the goal is that.
Six sixteen for twelve.
And so the goal is not to do everything in one year, so in twenty-five, what, twenty years, where the council will be looking at it again, well, why do we have to do this all at the same time? So that's not in this list, but I, I wanted you to have the numbers. On, on Thursday. So we've been talking kind of internally here about, you know, potential, an idea maybe for a subdivision. And that, we're gonna bring to closed session on Tuesday for finance, to kind of run through some of our thoughts and some of the numbers. And kind of see where your, what the council's feeling and thoughts are on that. So potentially some ARPA funds could be used in there. But otherwise, this is kind of what we pared it down to, um, as, as staff. Obviously, it's your choice beyond that. We left some smaller items in there just in case there's some residual at the end too, if you do a couple of big projects or. You know, I, for me, I thought the priority would be this building at the street department. We know, given our bonding and everything, we're not gonna be building a new street department in quite a few years. Uh, there is a number of, uh, there's a, there is equipment that's housed outside, there's materials. And this, this building will be able to get all that in and kind of close that gap for, for a while. Till someday, at some point, some council will hopefully consider the street department as a priority that, that needs a new building. Because there are parts of that that they use daily, which is good, from nineteen forty. So. And Jay's probably was there when that was built, but, um. But so I, I think that's a priority personally. And, and I think the, the Centralia Center is a concern for me, uh, also, because that will be something we are gonna have to address. It's gonna be through funding or bonding, but we will have to address that eventually.
So on these first three pages, have you added these up?
I have not added anything up.
Okay, and we've got one point two million, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you add it up?
Kinda, I, and I got, uh.
Couple million?
No, not, not a couple, one, one point one.
Oh, really?
Well, there's a lot of estimates in here and, and approximations, you know, and some big ranges that. A strategic plan for thirty to a hundred thousand dollars, so I think I took the low ones, but I think it came out just a little bit over a million for your first three pages, and I could have missed something.
That's including Centralia, because that's a mil, okay.
That did not include Centralia.
Okay. Yeah, you know what, some of these things, I probably, I personally would consider it a priority. But that's me personally. We have a dog park fencing in there, uh, you know, parking rec's gonna work with that, maybe with the outlay. So. You know, that's potential there, and it's not ninety-seven thousand now, it's like. I think it was sixty-five or somewhere around there. What we got for estimates, but you know, if, if, uh. If ARPA money was used, then we wouldn't have to use outlay, but that is another funding source and, which, you know, potentially that could be taken off.
Well, I think that.
The park outlay is out of room tax.
Right.
But.
But I think that also says three fifteen, I think that, that sixty-five number is a lot closer to the last time we talked about the fence, that was a different.
Yeah, and it's not really a priority since there is another funding source.
But this number is way higher than it would be.
The ninety-seven?
Yeah, because the, the fence we're talking about now isn't even the same fence that they were talking about.
Correct, it's down to sixty-five.
Yeah.
But we do have a funding source for that.
Yeah.
We left it in there though, because we know it's gonna be an upcoming project. However, I think the money could be better served elsewhere since there is a funding source for that. Yeah, I don't know how you want to pare it down more or, um. You know, it does, the decision doesn't need to be made tonight because none of these projects in here are currently in the budget, so they're outside the current existing budget.
So all of these that you have on here tonight though, there are no other funding sources, no grants, no?
We kind of went through that and there, there isn't, you know, some of the projects that got moved, a lot of the projects got moved into the, the remove from the priority list, starting on page four. Though, a lot of those have other opportunities to get, receive funding from elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to point out with, you know, the ARPA funds that we have until the fiscal year end, twenty twenty-four, to commit the funds contractually. So it's, it's not that, you know, a decision is needed tonight, but I, I think it's something that we need to start kind of prioritizing what we want to use these funds for and. You know, start over the next two years, definitely start addressing those, but you know, it's kind of, you know. You know, the thought was, is, you know, kind of in concert with the budget process, we'd start discussing these things because, you know, obviously we have some building needs out there and other needs that. Obviously, the ARPA funds could be used for and, you know, and if, if the council deems it a priority, you know, we have the funds available to undertake those projects.
But it, when we met today, the biggest priority was making sure, because some of these projects, we will definitely have to address in the future. These aren't extra, these aren't, these are gonna be projects that a council's gonna have to deal with. And I think our ARPA funds would be the most appropriate use of that to save taxpayer potential borrowing.
One that I. Would definitely not be interested in is the Eighth Street Corridor Study. Not a fan of, um, spending eighty to a hundred thousand dollars on a, uh, study. With that money.
And we, we kind of discussed because we don't have commitment from the state a hundred percent, but they're looking at twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-two potentially. Would, hopefully, if we can get it kind of narrowed in, that would be the whole length of A Street. And we thought maybe if there was a study done prior to A Street being all redone, that might give us some groundwork on, you know, that reconstruction of that project. That was the only, the only thinking at that time and discussion, but, yeah, I'm indifferent on it also.
Yeah, I'm just not a fan of the, um, our progress on outsourcing studies as of late. But, um. Ryan, your thoughts?
Well, and, Ryan, Ryan and I have talked and, um, you know, and I. And I'll bring it up that, you know, we discussed, um, like sewer lining projects, and I, this INI is, is. Is something very real and something that we have to deal with, INI would be the, the infiltration of groundwater into our sewer system and, you know, and potential lining projects. And kind of the thought was. You know, ARPA money is taxpayer money, and so, you know, if we can save, at, at least from my point of view, if we can save taxpayers' money on a borrowing. Because there's a lot of properties that don't pay taxes, but they do pay water and sewer bills. And so, you know, a lining project could be funded through a sewer, through the sewer ordinance where every property would be paying for that lining. Because it's gonna help every property out versus, um, you know, these, the taxpaying properties that will end up paying for any borrowing to do a project. You know, and so, but, but, and we're also undergoing, or they're undergoing a rate study through wastewater to help try to project future potential capital costs. And how, how rates can make sure, how, make sure rates are in, in line, so there's not a big jump in the future, you know, but this, this. INI is a serious problem in our community, especially with the West Side Lift Station, and, um, it needs to be addressed. But that's kind of what I was thinking, Ryan, and I didn't want to speak for you, but, you know, that's my, my thoughts behind, you know, some of these projects being, whether it be wastewater projects or water light projects. Or, you know, some of those type of things that, um, you know, trying to, trying to really stay focused on where we might have to borrow to do a project.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate where Mayor Blazer's coming from on that, um, you know, to me, uh, outside of the INI, there's, there's two glaring issues, in my opinion, that, you know, are, are coming at us. And that's the significant improvements that are gonna be needed at the Centralia Center and, and our roads. So anything involving the two, I would be completely in favor of.
Yeah, I agree, because that's, that is a direct cost, and we see that every year, borrowing for roads and, you know, if we can get ahead. You know, I don't think it makes sense to use all our ARPA funds so we don't have to borrow this year, because it's only, it's just fixing one year, you know, and I think if we can. You know, do these projects that will have a longer life, you know, I think that's a benefit, but there are some road projects in here and some resurfacing and, um, you know, some of those type of things that, like Ryan brought up, that could be looked at.
Can. You remind me, Brett, um, Ryan probably can help with this, can you talk about that light removal again at the boundary? I can't remember what we talked about on how that grant was worked out.
I think we were waiting to see what, what happened, you know.
Hundred to two.
Yeah, and you know, it's kind of a, you don't really know what you're getting into un, until you, you do the homework, you know, so there's obviously probably some contaminated soils and who knows what other.
That's right.
Decontamination will be needed inside, so, uh, I don't, I don't blame whoever put the number down to, to have a, a variance like that, so. It could be a lot, it could, might not be that big of a deal.
But we're gonna be responsible for that, Chad, no matter what.
If, yeah, if we have that property, but Kyle pulled that off because he said there's our, a number of other funding sources that could be used versus ARPA funds.
Okay.
So is this the entirety of the options?
Well, the options are what you want it to be, this is the options that staff kind of put together looking at.
This is, so this is the whole?
This is, was the whole list submitted.
All right, so how do we narrow it down? Do you have a, do you have a thoughts on how to narrow it down?
No, we don't want to flip coins. No flipping coins. It's really kind of what your priorities are, we've kind of listed out what we thought some of the priorities. I agree, there's things on here that I wouldn't consider a high priority. You know, but, uh, it's really what the council feels is a priority. Like I said, mine is, you know, street department, Centralia roof, and I agree with Ryan, anything on the roads. You know, whether it be more curb and gutter, um. But those would be my personal priorities, because those are a direct cost to us as taxpayers.
This has to be spent by, if I remember right, twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-four, they need to be designated.
They need to be designated.
Right, contract signed, kind of thing.
Out by twenty-six?
I believe so, yeah.
I'm sure you covered this, but how much total is there?
I believe there's about one point two million.
Not counting the Centralia.
Correct, in ARPA funds.
Two million in the dollar amount, I thought you meant when you added them up.
Yeah, yeah, one point two million dollars about, about for ARPA. Yeah, yeah, one point two million dollars about about for ARPA money available.
And you had thrown out some numbers before for the Lowell Center over there.
Mm-hmm.
You went a little quick for me.
No problem.
Did you say three oh eight or three eighty?
Three oh eight, three oh, three hundred and eight thousand.
Times two?
Times two, if we did twelve.
So that's half the money right there.
Correct. I don't think we should do everything in one year, though. You know, it'd really be nice to have some of that spread out, so we're not replacing it all the same year.
So we got these from the four different contractors that do HVAC? And they recommended replacing the the same, did any of them have any other ideas as to what to use?
So what the, and I don't have the bid bid proposal that was put together, but they were bidding on a specific proposal that was put out there for bid, not bringing each contractor in saying, what what would you do?
Don't you think that would be a better idea? I mean, there might be something.
Yeah, it's kind of unique with public bidding, though, that you have to put out a proposal, and then the lowest bidder is, the lowest qualified bidder would be the eligible person versus. But I do know that at least the equipment there is outdated to the point where, you know, they can't find the stuff on eBay parts anymore, and then also they can't. Well, that one time, we had a board go out that the company, we paid twelve hundred dollars to have them custom create us a board, because we couldn't find a board anymore, and and there was no heat over there out of one of the units last winter.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you. Uh, just going back to this, we were talking about the Lowell Center over here, uh, Centralia Center, so you're saying the roof could last five more years?
Correct.
But then in five years, we're we're not going to have this money, so we're going to have to figure out.
Right, you start putting away money now.
Right.
With what extra money?
Right.
And then, um, yeah, and we're hoping it'll last five years, they they did some repairs, they kind of cobbled it together a little bit, but I think it's, it'll last a little bit. Um, it's not a dire right now that it's going to leak, but we do have tenants in there that, you know, really have an expectation that they shouldn't have buckets in their inner space.
Right.
But they did a pretty good job coming in there and chasing a lot of that down.
So we gave the approval for the six big units already?
Correct, but we we wanted to go out to public bid, and so that will be brought back on Tuesday to officially decide on, you know, accepting the lowest bid, and specific, probably a little more conversation on exactly where that funding will come. Like Tim said, there's two hundred and fifty thousand in the replacement account right now, and so you're almost there for the six.
So two fifty, so basically, if we did the roof and twelve, we're almost at a million, less the two fifty that they already have in there.
Correct.
If we did the roof and twelve, we'd be at seven hundred and fifty thousand-ish.
Correct.
Or you could do the roof and six, minus the two fifty that we have for a little over four hundred. Which would leave you eight hundred thousand dollars left.
Yeah, it's kind of a unique situation, you know, with Centralia there, kind of, kind of changes things, if that wasn't there, this would look a whole different. But it's there looking at us, and we know that it is going to be an issue at some point, and we know we've had heating issue, or we've had rooftop unit issues already.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, then.
So you want to decide tonight, or?
Pardon?
Okay.
Oh, no.
You don't have to decide tonight, I'm just.
Oh, okay.
It's up to you guys, you, I don't want to stop you from making a motion if you guys have have an idea of what you want to do.
Well, I would do a straw poll, then. I'm going to do a straw poll, and what I'd, what I would put forward, especially based on what Jay said and what Ryan said, and just listen to the group. I'd say the roof and the six units. Utilize in the two hundred and fifty for the, from the Centralia Fund. And then the balance for road projects. To be determined by the street department, et cetera. I mean, I don't have the specific road projects in mind, you know.
And and that's a question we can ask Paul and Joy said.
That's, and that would be my idea. And love, love to hear input from other people in there. Patrick?
I really like the Lowell Center, and I don't want to do anything to stop anything that's going on over there, but I do think that it would be beneficial if the city had an engineer or somebody that knew what they were doing to go over there, maybe a couple of them, handful of people. We've got a lot of great people that work for the city. Somebody that could go over there, look at it, I mean, there might be ways to lower the ceilings, so there's not so mu- much cubic foot that we're heating, so maybe we wouldn't need all six units. I just think it would be worth it to have people go over there and gi- give some ideas on what to do. Also, instead of replacing, just putting it out a bid to replace the same units, I think it would be good to talk with the contractors and see what their recommendations are, there might be something that we're not thinking about, that might be more efficient, and maybe a hydronic unit or something like that 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 they could install, and it may be a lot more efficient and work better for what we're looking for over there. So I would vote no for right now, I just think that it was kind of, it was brought up a few councils ago, I know everybody remembers, it was just kind of a pretty knee-jerk reaction, I think, to what was going on over there. In my opinion. You guys can do whatever you want to do, though.
That's already been approved, so we'd have to go back on that.
Um, no, because I think Tuesday night would be the time that approval would happen.
We're entertaining bids.
We, um, right, we have bids, and so we will kind of discuss that on Tuesday, and then, um, but yeah, Patrick, we have a heating cooling guy on staff, and we can, we can have a conversation, he's been a very much a part of this, and he's done a lot of work on those units, which has saved us a lot of money. We can have another conversation with him and see, I'll talk to Jake tomorrow, and then we can kind of see what his opinion is. And that's, and we're kind of doing that as we spoke with about the library, you know. We've got a couple of people on staff that have this maintenance background, and we're kind of, kind of using them as a sounding board to see if things make sense, and kind of double-check with our contractors, but I'll talk to Jake tomorrow.
I'll second Dean's motion.
So that's an official motion, Dean?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make it official.
Okay. I'll show you here in a minute.
So, yeah, could you repeat the motion, and I, I guess after Patrick's request, maybe look for some other options? Could you repeat the motion?
Well, my motion was based on those units already been approved. And the the bid that we think is coming in at three hundred and eight thousand for the six. And so my motion was the roof at three fifty-four and the six units at three oh eight, less the two fifty that's in the in the fund already. Whichever that number comes out to, and the balance going to road projects, that's what my motion was. But I'm, I do like Patrick's idea of looking at that.
And I'll, I'll talk to Jake tomorrow about that.
I guess my motion, rather than a dollar number, then, my motion would be, I can amend my motion to say the repair of the of the six u-, or the six units, or whatever's needed for that particular thing, plus the roof, at whatever cost that comes in at, plus the two fifty, using the balance for road projects. So I won't put a dollar amount on it, because we might be able to get engineering to come up with a less expensive.
And then the other six units we'll worry about?
At another budget.
Okay.
Tim?
Um, for road projects, are you talking about construction, mill and overlay, maintenance, or just?
That was the way I left it when you were out.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, for, um, street, for Paul to evaluate what was needed most.
Okay, so at some point, we got to bring back and saying, okay.
I, I don't have an idea what the individual road projects we need were, but would be what Paul recommends, and then Public Works.
Okay, so it'd be for staff to come back with a recommendation of this, and once we kind of do the roof and kind of get an idea what that's going to cost, and we can come back.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what I would do for, so I guess that's the motion. You still second it?
I'll still second, yeah.
Any further discussion? Yeah?
So what we're saying right now is, we're, we kind of are setting a precedence for where we want the money to go. And if we do that now, are we doing it again later?
Well, it goes to council.
I probably wouldn't bring anything back outside of, for any further discussion, unless you ask me to, or any staff to do something outside of what this motion is. This point going forward, that's will be our focus on, you know, evaluating the roof, and then, you know, finding some road projects that Public Works, or that Street Department and Engineering can bring to the, to Mr. Austin's committee and discuss, you know, some road projects coming, that are beginning, coming up.
Jim? Yeah, I would look at this as like you're kind of prioritizing the use of the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Obviously, these, all these projects have to be bid out or brought back forth between the body, and then obviously, if all of a sudden, for some reason, one of these projects wasn't approved, obviously, then there would be another ARPA discussion as to how we want to use that, because obviously, I think everyone in this room wants to use the full amount of the ARPA. You know, so I would say that we're prioritizing the projects for the intended use, but obviously, the the final project still has to be approved by the council.
And so that's where our focus will be in rest of that list, will have to be funded some other avenue sometime in the future through a budget process.
And Jay, are you, I guess you kind of mentioned Patrick saying some stuff, are you feeling like we're ready for this, or? Well, I don't know if we're ready for this or not, if we can come in with some other options. I I support the roof, I I can support replacing those HVAC units regardless if we replace the existing units, or if we come up with something different, and then the balance of this going to the roads, I can support that.
And that's kind of, and even the expense, I mean, I I guess my motion would include the research to find a better way, too, you know.
Right, so I don't, I don't think this is necessarily set in stone, I mean, it's a direction.
Dollar number, but.
It's a direction.
Like Tim said, the priority of the thing is the Lowell Center, with the balance being the roads.
So that helps, gives you guys some direction, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, because I think right now, as you saw by the list, there are
Right.
fifty options out there, and they're all different, but now we'll just focus on Centralia Center and roads, and then we'll take those through the through finance and property, and then through Mr. Austin's committee also, going forward then. And that's where we'll focus on versus any of the other things.
Right.
And then they also know, you know, there, there's some individual department things that I think through the budget requested item, also through the fires, regarding the fire station, too, we kind of know where we stand with that, and we can plan accordingly that, you know, our dollars aren't going to be used for that, because that's not within that priority of roads, and go forth from there.
Any further discussion? Any motion, and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, so we have some direction now. Pretty much concludes our meeting for this evening, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Say, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.